To speak, just go ahead and raise your virtual hand icon and we will take them first come first. Telephone only, you can push star six to mute and unmute and star nine to raise and unraise your hand. Spanish translation is provided at this meeting, so I would like to thank you for your continued patience during our remote meetings. This will be our last Zoom meeting. We are going back in person on the next, at the next meeting in March. And going forward until further notice. So in that case, we'd like, I'd like to hand it over to Chair Hernandez now to officially begin the meeting.
Great. Thank you, Bridget. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we please get a roll call vote?
Yes, Commissioner Ruddick.
I am present.
Commissioner Jonas.
Present.
And Commissioner Goran.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Gossett.
Here.
And Chair Hernandez.
I am present.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
Excellent. So the first thing we have on our agenda is the approval of minutes from February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Does anybody have any comments or feedback on the minutes before we move for approval?
Do you want to press it?
Not seeing anybody raising their hand.
I think Steve raises his hand.
Steve?
Well, maybe I was jumping the gun a little bit. I was about to move. We approve the minutes of February fourteenth.
Second, you got a second?
I'll second that.
You can second.
I got a clear second from Commissioner Gossett, Vice Chair Gossett.
Okay, so Commissioner, Commissioner Ruddick.
Yes.
Commissioner Jonas.
Yes.
Commissioner Goran.
Yes, please.
Vice Chair Gossett.
Yes.
And Chair Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion approves, approve.
Excellent. That is the approval of all the minutes that we have. The next thing we have on our agenda is public comment. For those of you participating in the meeting who would like to speak, we have, for anything that is not on the agenda, you are welcome to join us for three minutes of whatever it is that you would like to share with us. Is anybody queued up for public comment or is anybody from the public raised their hand, Bridget?
Yes, let me just pull over here. I have Mike for, I would like to speak. So I'm gonna go ahead and.
Excellent.
Good evening, Chair Goran, no, not Chair Goran anymore, Chair Hernandez and council members and staff, excuse me, planning commissioners. The reason I wanted to talk to you is that there was an article in the San Mateo Daily Journal recently by a gentleman named Body and it was a reprint from Cal Matters. And it was talking about farm labor and farm labor housing. And then this idiot decided to talk about Half Moon Bay. And let me just quote one piece of his article. Individual efforts are no substitute for systemic change and local support to expand affordable housing in Half Moon Bay have been stifled by a significant anti-growth, anti-housing constituency. Land use attorney Jennifer Hernandez told the San Francisco Chronicle. Voters passed Measure D in nineteen ninety-nine, which capped city growth to a fraction of the population and implemented a bureaucratic certificate program. Similarly, glacial approvals from the Coastal Commission, with delays of up to two to three years for even home remodels, the norm, led Senator Scott Wiener, Democrat, San Francisco, to tweet that such measures as Half Moon Bay's, quote, "should be illegal," unquote, while calling for reforms of the commission. There is so much unproofed packed into that paragraph, it beggars description. And the reputation of the town suffers. Last year was one of the very few years that Measure D has constrained anything. The last subdivision denied by the Coastal Commission was on September eleventh, two thousand one. And where is this? I mean, you, none of you have experience with the Coastal Commission denying projects or taking two to three years to approve projects. This idiocy just really obviously angers me. I think it should anger you. And when people write this kind of dribble, they should be taken to task and people should write back at them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate your comments. Are there any other public speakers?
I have no one.
Okay, great. So I'm going to close public comment and I am going to move to the first public hearing item, which is our two thousand twenty-two housing element, which is somewhat related to the comment from the public speaker. Who is going to lead us in this item?
Good evening, Chair Hernandez and Commissioners and members of our audience. I'm Jill Ikas, your Community Development Director, Mike Noche, our Housing Coordinator, and I are going to give you a quick overview of your two thousand twenty-two Housing Element Annual Progress Report. This is something you see every year. And for this report, we do want to note, this is the last report for the cycle five housing element. The cycle five housing element spanned twenty fifteen through two thousand twenty-three, so two thousand twenty-two was the last year for reporting off of that one. We are running behind on our cycle six housing element, but that will be the element that you're going to see pretty soon. And all future reports for the next eight years will be based on your new housing element. Because this is your last report, we wanted to, for cycle five, we wanted to highlight some things that happened in two thousand twenty-two, but also to take a look at the housing element as a whole for, for the entire eight-year period. And so I'm gonna poke on the status of the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA, which is really the development of units. And then Mike is going to highlight a few programs that have been really active and are frankly, a number of them were completed. So, quickly on RENA. The RENA for the cycle five element was a total of two hundred and forty units. RENA is split between four different income categories, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. These categories are then distributed with a, in this, in this cycle, about half of the units were in the above moderate category. You will find in cycle six that we have much deeper need for very low and low. So this is gonna look a lot different next year. And because we wanted to highlight some things about what's going on with housing activity, we separated two thousand twenty-two and from the two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty-one, the average number of units that were issued building permits, and that's what we're showing here. Each of these numbers represents a housing unit that was issued a building permit during, during this time period. And that's how HCD, the Housing and Community Development Department with the state, that's how they count, count the units. And the average was twenty per year. And so you can see in two thousand twenty-two, we actually had thirty-five permits issued. Things are starting to skew higher and you're aware of it because two, for two years in a row, you've seen full allocation of Measure D. And you're going to see that again. We'll, we'll be bringing that to you at your, probably at your March meeting. And that's been around sixty to seventy units per year. And that, that will start to catch up with us. There's a, there's a pipeline where we have quite a few units in the planning process that aren't going to show up on RENA because they're, they're attracted to the building permit application. So what you'll see here is we've had a significant number actually of moderate because we were counting all of our accessory dwelling units towards that income category, which was something that HCD had allowed us to do. We got most of the moderate, or excuse me, above mod. Clearly, very low and low are trailing behind. But we wanted to note a few things for you because the, the big picture about RENA is a little more interesting with Half Moon Bay right now. The Coastside Inn was approved during this, this housing element to be converted to coast house, which is fifty-two rooms that if they had kitchens, we would be able to count them against the RENA. So they may be coming forward in your cycle six element, should any of those kinds of improvements be done. We are also now allowed to distribute accessory dwelling units amongst different income categories. And I'll show you what that looks like on the next slide. And we have quite a few applications in planning right now, just these three, the Hilltop Mobile Home Park, the five-five-five Kelly Affordable Housing Project with the agreement going forward with Mercy Housing and Alas, and the Creekside Subdivision, total about a hundred units that you're not seeing in your arena, but that are actively being worked on. If we were able to have counted Coastside Inn and distribute the ADUs, which is something that we're gonna follow up with HCD about, but if we would have been able to distribute the sixty-five accessory dwelling units that were permitted during this period, and this is what your, your numbers would have looked like on, for accomplishing the RENA. We, we weren't all the way there, but it, I just think it's good context to give you a sense of how active things were in, in this period. At the same time, we want to note, housing elements are really, really important. They aren't just about RENA, they are just about programs, and Mike's gonna talk about that too. Despite having produced this housing, clearly we have other housing needs that are unmet in our community that we are working on, whether they're part of a housing element problem or not. So these are, these are things that will be coming forward and we'll be giving you updates about farm labor housing work that we, we have going on very actively right now in the city and in collaboration also with San Francisco County. It's premature to, to update you with that, but we just wanted to reassure you that that is, that is work that's underwriting. And for program implementation, Mike wanted to highlight updates for you.
Thank you, Jill, and good evening, Chair Hernandez and Planning Commissioners, Mike Noche, Housing Coordinator. So the, good evening. So the items I'm gonna highlight here are, more specifically, have had measurables over the year two thousand twenty-two. The items that I am highlighting can be found in Table D of the APR. It's on page eighteen of Attachment One, or excuse me, page eight of eighteen on Attachment One. So the first item, the ADU ordinance, as many of you know, had initial updates in two thousand eighteen and then subsequent updates in two thousand twenty-one. It was then certified by the Coastal Commission and City Council in two thousand twenty-two. We've had continued development on small lots, an average of three substandard, average of three substandard and/or severely standard lots being developed per year, pretty much exceeded. I think we jumped on the slide. Thanks, Jill, and no worries. Thank you. And so I think I was saying, we exceeded our average over the course of cycle five. We had a total of twenty-nine small lots and that's substandard and/or severely substandard lots. So a total of twenty-nine, which exceeded our target of sixteen during the cycle. As for the five-five-five Kelly Avenue RFQ, it was released in February of two thousand twenty-two and that was a call for affordable housing development on city-owned property at five-five-five Kelly Avenue. It included five-thirty-five Kelly Avenue or a portion of, which is the Ted Adcock Community Center, just the parking lot or the front parking lot closest to Kelly Avenue. And the proposal that we did receive in May of two thousand twenty-two was from Mercy Housing and, and Alas. And that was a proposal for forty units focused on farmworker housing and, and the, given the unit size with a special focus on senior farmworkers who may be retiring and definitely a, a big need there. And I won't go into too much deal, detail on that one because I know we'll have future updates and that project will be coming to the Planning Commission in the near future. As far as kind of current events with that project in February of this, this year, this, this month, excuse me, we're in the last day. A pre-development loan agreement was signed with Mercy Housing and the amount of one million dollars in support of the project from the city. Another one point five million in pre-development funding has already been approved by the County of San Mateo. And the city will be, the staff will be bringing a grant agreement that'll be signed with the county to City Council for approval and then very near future, within the next month or two. We'll also have a subsequent agreement with Mercy Housing for that grant funding, but the, the city will control that funding from the county. As you know, and I'm, I'm in front of you this evening, the city hired a housing coordinator position. So very much appreciate the opportunity to serve the Half Moon Bay community and be with you this evening. Moving right along on Program three dash one. This is related to, and staff just wanted to highlight this as a, as a milestone that in relation to mixed-use districts and parking standards ordinance that was certified in two thousand twenty, it allowed projects within these districts to, to move forward, most specifically four-one-five Prisma Street, which is, as many of you know, moving right along in the construction phase. And then the Maine and Kelly project is, is, will be, I believe, embarking pretty soon. So that is a measurable there. And the last one, just to highlight, is that the city passed a building electrification ordinance in February two thousand twenty-two. So I'll leave it at that. Again, all of the, these, and, and the reason why Table D is, is so important on the program aspect is that these are a lot of the measurables that we report to HCD and wanted to, to share with the Planning Commission. We'll be sharing it with City Council and want to make sure members of the public know where to find these activities that the city has been working on over, throughout the cycle. So I'll hand it back to Jill. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. And that bullet point about getting the Housing Coordinator is my favorite one. Mike is the city's first dedicated housing staff person and is really making a difference in what we've been able to do this year. This item is, you are welcome to discuss, ask questions. We're happy to do that with you. You're really, as a Commissioner, being asked to just confirm receipt of this report. And it will also go to City Council before it is submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development. It is due on or before April first. We are been able to get this all in on time and I want to thank Scott Phillips, who did so much work on tables, oh gosh, what is it, two A and two B? They're all, all those numbers and working with Ben Corrales, our permanent technician for tracking all of these permits. And it's, it's a lot of work and we really need to track it very, very carefully. These are scrutinized reports and I think they're only going to keep getting more and more complex as, as time goes by. So with that, we'll, we're done with our brief presentation and I appreciate your attention to this and are happy to field questions.
Are there any questions from my fellow Commissioners? I'm seeing a lot of head shaking. I had one question, which is given the scrutiny that Sacramento and the state and the county are placing on the needs, housing needs, this, I'll call it creative thinking, we've applied to the Coastside Inn and other projects and the ADUs. In the conversation that you have with the state and the county, how do they view our progress on these things? Are we doing our job? Are we struggling to achieve the goals that have been laid down in front of us? Can you provide a little context on where we sit as a community?
I think I'll take that, a first stab at it. It is, it is hard to know because you can imagine how many housing element reports our HCD colleagues are reviewing. I would suggest they think we're doing pretty well in terms of program implementation. I, I will note, however, that a number of the programs were hard to implement because they were so specific and not necessarily right on the mark in terms of what was really needed. For example, there's a program about addressing parking standards in the R three zoning district. Well, there's hardly any vacant land or development going on in the R three zoning district. So we, we did a lot more work with parking standards in the mixed-use districts and that was fruitful. So it's that kind of nuance that was required in, in terms of implementation. Certainly, our RENA performance is, is something that we're, we're struggling with. It's really, really hard to get anything below moderate income without having a, without having more of a land bank, public-owned lands and nonprofits coming in to develop them. And that is exactly what's going on with five-five-five Kelly now. That was enabled by the land use plan update. And we can't stop, you know, really talking enough about what the land use plan update did in terms of eroding some of the really significant constraints that had been in place during the cycle, especially the water connection issue where we had not been able to get affordable housing water connections served from the district, in the water district to Half Moon Bay until we were very deep and into the land use plan. That has really, the, the feedback we've gotten from the nonprofits about that is, oh, we can finally consider doing a project in your city again. So.
So after eight years, we've made significant progress in terms of removing constraints. We haven't achieved the measurable goals in the RENA, but because of the progress we've made in removing constraints and some of the creative ways and priorities that City Council has put in front of us, we have some projects before us where we'll be able to make some significant progress towards our RENA goals to the end of this cycle and for the next cycle. Is that fair?
That is fair and I think I could agree with this. We're, we're definitely, believe we're moving in the right direction.
Okay. Commissioner, Vice Chair Gossett.
Thank you for the presentation, Jill and Mike. The question I have is regarding zoning. So since, you know, Jill, you mentioned that the LUP that was approved a couple of years ago removed a lot of the constraints that impacted the development of housing. How, where do we stand with our zoning in terms of? Does that help us or do we have more work to do with our zoning code? Where do you think we stand with that?
We definitely have more work to do with our zoning code, but the land use plan holds sway over the zoning ordinance and that is per policy that is included in Chapter one of the land use plan. So we are in a really healthy position relative to zoning, even though it hasn't been fully implemented yet. Some of the districts were already updated concurrently to the land use plan update. We did that work that Mike already referred to with the mixed-use districts, which frankly was anticipated while we were working on the land use plan and we found that we just needed to pull it ahead, forward. The ADU ordinance caught ahead of the land use plan at times and that was, that was a program that needed to be done. The short-term rental ordinance is also a zoning project that needed to be addressed. So it isn't all just about the zoning designations on the map. It's also about the code itself for, for different land uses. So, yes, more to do, but a lot has already been done and we're trailing. We're, we're wrapping up the housing element to bring it forward and we are going to trail it with the zoning.
Commissioner Goran.
Hey Jill, could I ask you a quick question of the, the homeless housing, the coast house? Assuming that we get some sort of upgrade, like kitchens, I believe is what you were talking about, how many units are we talking about, like roughly, if you could get what you want to get?
So we don't know yet. It was a fifty-two-room motel. And if individual rooms are converted into really small individual dwelling units by having kitchens retrofitted in, you could, you could have as many as fifty-two. It's also imaginable to us that maybe some of the rooms would be combined to make a little bit larger room so then we, our unit, so then we wouldn't have a one-to-one. We're not sure yet where, where. We're not sure yet where where they're going with this. The county's been investing in the coast house. The most recent work they're doing is ADA upgrades that were really important. So they're they're going to wrap that up, and it'll be interesting to see what they think is the next best step for serving the population that they're supporting. And of course, life moves is operating first house. And we'll have a lot of input in terms of what they believe their clients need.
Commissioner Johannes.
Um, I do have a question on the coast house. Does the type of kitchen matter? For example, can it be mini kitchens? Or can it be? Does it have to be a full kitchen? Is there requirements on that to have it count towards the progress?
So Mike and I are learning about this right now. And then, Mike, do you have any?
Yeah, that's definitely, that's a great question, Commissioner Johannes. Appreciate the question. I I think at a bare minimum, a kitchen sink, probably a two burner cooktop of sorts and a refrigerator countertop, I think, would probably be. You know, I I don't know that HCD gets into the those specifics past a kitchen facility. There may be some some language somewhere that we can report back to you on. It's a great question, though, and much appreciated.
Okay. I'm not seeing any other questions or comments from my fellow commissioners. So I think we're going to go ahead and close this item. Thank you, Jill.
Um, excuse me, Chair Chair Hernandez. Did you open that one up for public comment? I don't know that anyone has any, but.
Uh, very good point. I will open it for public comment. If there are any public comments, we're happy to receive those. Bridget, is there anybody who would like to speak on this item?
I'm not seeing anyone. Oh, I'm seeing one. Um,
Okay.
Mike, I would like to speak. You can unmute and go ahead.
Hi. Hello again, commissioners. Is it possible, is it feasible that Stone Pine could get into the next eight year cycle? And if so, do you have an estimate of how many units that would be and in what category? That's just a question. Thank you.
Thanks.
Through the chair staffs, happy to answer the speaker's question. Uh, Stone Pine, eight eighty Stone Pine is included in our draft housing element that you'll be seeing pretty soon. As a housing site, we have been studying a range of different types of housing products that would be appropriate for that site. And whatever type of product is selected is going to affect build out. And so we can update more about build out later. Of course, because it is public owned land, specifically the cities, uh, the affordability levels, our intent would be that it be as low as can be financed to support that that even in the community has.
I have no other, oh, I have no other public commenters at this time.
Thank you, Jill. And I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment. And then at this point, there's no other action for us. We've received.
Yes, make a motion that you're acknowledging it.
To make a motion that we received it. Okay. Can I get a motion? Commissioner Reddick.
Uh, I move that the, excuse me. I moved that the planning commission confirmed receipt of the twenty twenty two housing element annual report, annual progress report.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
Can I get a roll call?
Yeah. Commissioner Reddick.
Yes.
Commissioner Johannes?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gossett?
Yes.
And Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion carries or approval carries?
Excellent. Okay, so the next item, moving on to the next item on our agenda. We have a study session around planning commission fundamentals. And is somebody going to speak on this?
I am. I'm sorry. I was having a little costume change with PowerPoint. Okay. So, um, let me just get this started and we appreciate the commission holding this item tonight. Winter King, our deputy city attorney, will be covering the first two topics. This is something that we try to do at least every couple of years when we have new commissioners seated. And there was kind of an interim update, I think, on the Brown Act for some of you with city council last last year, but it's been a while since we've done this with the commission as a whole. Uh, Winter's going to cover the Brown Act and conflicts of interest. And then staff is here tonight, and I I will kind of skate over bylaws and basics, and then it will leave you plenty of time to ask questions or discuss any of the topics that come up. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Winter, and Winter, you just let me know when to talk. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Good evening, planning commissioners. It's nice to be here with you on Zoom, and I look forward to being with you in in person again in the not too distant future. Though I hear it's cold where we're going to be having these meetings, so I'm gonna have to bring my, you know, fleece jacket. But, um, so first up tonight, we're going to be talking about the Brown Act. Um, and we did do this. So some of you, I think, I I know some of you were on the commission in twenty twenty one. Last time we did this, it was, I think, a planning commission retreat, and we did a very similar update. So I'll try and spice it up to the extent I can, or you can maybe throw some hard questions into the mix and spice it up that way. But we do have a couple of new commissioners as well. And so hopefully everyone will get a little something out of the presentation. But, um, so the Brown Act, um, the basic idea behind the Brown Act is kind of encapsulated in this first bullet point, which is that public agencies exist to carry out the people's business, and the people have the right to be informed. So the Brown Act is our state's open meeting law as it applies to local governments and basically requires that any city decision making happen in an open and transparent way at a public meeting, with some exceptions, but by and large, in a public meeting setting. Uh, so next slide. Um, and so this is really the heart of the Brown Act. It's that meetings have to take place in public, and the public has to be given proper notice of the meetings. And this, you know, ensures that the people's business is not done in backroom meetings, but kind of under the the watchful eye of the public. And we'll get into some details about what is a meeting and what the notice has to be in a second here. So next slide. Okay, here's the definition of what a meeting is. It is any gathering of a majority of commissioners to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Um, so I'll I'll throw out an example, which maybe I used last time, but and I'll I'll pull the commission to see what you think, whether it's a meeting or not. But let's say three of you commissioners run into each other at a coffee shop, and the conversation turns to, you know, the five 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 Kelly development. Um, and you start chatting about that. Is that a public meeting? Or is that a meeting, I should say? Yes, Commissioner Reddick.
Well, yeah, if we're talking about an issue like five 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 Kelly, that does constitute a meeting.
Yes, yes, I would agree with that. Now, if the three of you are out and about and you're talking about, you know, what you're gonna wear for Halloween or something, that's not a meeting. But talking about something that could come before the planning commission is is a meeting under the Brown Act. Okay, so next slide. And these meetings can take place not just when you run into each other in the coffee shop or or at an event. There are other kinds of kind of communications that can result in what is considered a meeting under the Brown Act. So, for example, if Commissioner Ruddick runs into Chair Hernandez and says, hey, I'm really worried about this, you know, development that's going up, and Chair Hernandez says, yeah, me too. And then Chair Hernandez runs into Vice Chair Gossett and says, oh, I was just talking to Commissioner Ruddick, and we're both really worried about this proposal that's coming up. That has just created a meeting because now you have, three of you have, this is what's called the daisy chain meeting, where you've kind of serially talked to one another about a matter that is within the purview of the planning commission. The other example is the the hub and spoke. So, you know, maybe Chair Hernandez is really worried about something or excited about a development and first reaches out to Commissioner Ruddick and then Vice Chair Gossett and then Commissioner Gorn and continues to have a conversation relaying everybody's position. So in that case, Chair Hernandez would be the hub and the spoke would be the conversations with the other members. And even though none of you wasn't three people together in a room, that still is considered a meeting under the Brown Act. And then this individual briefings. So staff will meet, or or I might meet with each of you individually to talk about, for example, something that's coming up that may have conflict of interest implications. And those individual briefings are okay, as long as nobody is gathering the information from each meeting and conveying it to the other members of the commission. All right, I think we're ready for the next slide. All right, this brings us to electronic communications, which are possibly the easiest way to unintentionally hold a meeting under the Brown Act. And basically, you can, just like you can have a serial meeting or a daisy chain meeting, you can accidentally create a meeting if you are sending an email out or there's an email conversation happening among three or more commissioners. So one good rule of thumb, if there is an email communication to the commissioners first, Jill and other staff members are really good at putting all of you in the BCC line so that you can't actually accidentally reply all and get to all the other commissioners. But you should also just be careful and not do reply all when you're receiving a message that's going to all of the commissioners as that would or could create create a meeting under the Brown Act. And then there was somewhat recent legislation about member communications on social media, because obviously commissioners and and other public servants are interested in communicating with people in the city, in the community about issues that are important. And now we have all these great platforms to do that on social media. So there are some specific guidelines that have been provided. And the basic rule of thumb is that, you know, you can't, it it would be a meeting to, you know, engage in a dialogue amongst commissioners on a social media platform about city business. But you can use social media to answer questions and provide information to the public and solicit information from the public. So really, the the point is to avoid any communications on social media, in email, or in person among three or more commissioners about city business. Okay. Oh, and then texting. Texting could also create a meeting, just like email could. And texting is also something we'll we'll touch on. We'll have one slide on the Public Records Act. And we'll talk about texting there as well. Okay, so here are some types of meetings that are not subject to the Brown Act. And I think the things that come up most, or I've seen come up most among planning commissioners, is going to conferences together, if there's a conference that's or a training or something like that on an issue that's important to planning commissioners. Three or more of you can go. We usually recommend that just to avoid any appearance of impropriety or any kind of accidental communications outside of a public meeting. That if you do go to those conferences and there are more than, you know, there are three or more of you, that maybe you don't sit right together all the time, which might be tempting to have those conversations kind of spread out. And this would be a good time to say that the rules I'm telling you for the Brown Act and later with conflicts of interest, this is really like the legal floor, and so you can always do better. There's no harm in doing, taking extra effort to really make sure that what you're doing is having these communications in an open and public setting. And so some of the other, you know, social or ceremonial events, I imagine that you all will run into each other at events in Half Moon Bay, since you're you're out in the public. And then there's, if you're, like, when we had the, we sometimes have joint sessions with city council, like the last time we had this Brown Act training. And for that, if you're attending another publicly noticed Brown Act meeting, that's that's not a problem. You can all go and attend those. Okay, I think that's good on that one. So if there is going to be a public meeting and you are going to all get together, or three or more of you are going to get together and talk about city business, there needs to be notice to the public. And the typical notice for a regular meeting is seventy two hours. And at that marker, at least seventy two hours in advance of the meeting, the city will need to notify the public in a number of ways that the meeting's going to happen. What is going to be discussed at the meeting? That's what's on the agenda. And then oftentimes, that will be accompanied, you know, that's your agenda packet. It will be accompanied with by staff reports and other materials that will be discussed at the meeting. So that's the notice requirement. And then the other key rule here under the Brown Act is, once that agenda is set and notice is provided, the planning commission can't discuss non-agenda items. So this is sometimes when you'll be talking about, you know, one agenda item, and it might raise an idea about something else that you had in mind. And maybe the conversation might veer off towards that other idea. I might, you know, raise my hand and say, you know, this sounds like a good conversation, but it's not on the agenda for tonight. And so your options then are to put it on an agenda for a later meeting and discuss it then. And the basic idea is that, you know, the way I think about it is, if I were a member of the public, would I have known that this was going to be discussed? And if I'm interested, would I have known to join the meeting? So if you start talking about something else, then the, you know, the member of the public who's interested in that wouldn't have any notice that that was going to be discussed and wouldn't have shown up and would miss out on the conversation. So. and wouldn't have shown up and would miss out on the conversation. So, um, that's one of the sort of key rules under the Brown Act. There are some exceptions here on the slide. And we do have, we have sort of a whole section at the end of our Planning Commission meetings where Commissioner Communications or the, um, the, um, Community Development Director Updates will raise things that, you know, there's not like a spot on the agenda for every single thing you raise. And that's fine as long as we keep these, um, announcements brief. Um, and they're really limited to requests for more information or report back, request to put things on, um, a future agenda or these, these brief announcements. So, um, that's, that's, um, those are the exceptions to the rule about not discussing non-agenda items. Okay, next slide. Great. Um, so, uh, when we have the public meetings and we've, um, you know, just had one tonight, um, there are some requirements about how the public, um, must be allowed to engage, um, in these meetings. And so, um, first is that written materials that have been sent to the Planning Commission, um, or that, uh, staff prepares for the Planning Commission must be made available to the public. Um, and I think nowadays, we mostly do this by posting the materials online to the city website. Back when we were in person, there would also be printouts, you know, on the table at the back of the room. Um, and, um, we do this, um, kind of as promptly as we can, although, um, we sometimes do get communications kind of up to and including during the meeting. So, um, we just provide, um, make them available as soon as we feasibly can. Uh, the public has to be allowed to attend and observe and also, um, address the commission either in oral comments, um, during the kind of general public hearing, um, segment of the meeting or on any agenda item or by providing written comments. Um, and, uh, we are allowed, the city is allowed to put reasonable limits, time limits on the verbal comments. And we typically do three minutes, um, in order to make sure that, you know, everyone gets a chance to speak and everyone can go home at a reasonable hour. And then the last requirement about, um, kind of the operation of the meetings is that, um, we need to take minutes of what happens. And then, um, as you all have seen, we review and approve the minutes um, at the next meeting or shortly thereafter. Um, one, uh, well, one other side note about, um, kind of how the public meetings are run. This isn't so much an issue anymore since we've been on Zoom, but, um, uh, the city can't actually force members of the public to give their name and identifying information, even though back in olden times, we would have speaker cards and we would, um, ask folks to fill them out so that we could kind of keep track of who made comments and, um, put that in the minutes. But if people want to, uh, not give us that information, it's, it's their right to. Okay, um, so, um, you know, we've been operating, uh, in the COVID nineteen era for a couple of years now, three, couple, three years. Um, and so when the pandemic, uh, first hit, um, the governor issued an executive order that temporarily suspended certain portions of the Brown Act to allow public agencies to, um, hold these Zoom meetings without following all the requirements of the Brown Act for teleconference participation, which, um, back in the old days, it was actually, um, pretty limited opportunities for, um, participating in these public meetings. Like if you were a commissioner and you were traveling out of town, um, and there was all this, um, you know, uh, these requirements about, you know, if you're participating from a hotel room in Spokane, you had to put the notice on the door and the public would be allowed to, um, come and, you know, be in your hotel room while the meeting was happening. Um, so during the pandemic times, um, that was all suspended. Um, and so all these sort of sub-bullet points for all the rules that were suspended, um, were this, the like, really free, um, uh, Brown Act COVID nineteen era is coming to a close. Um, we're not going back to such strict rules as we had before. Um, we are going to be continuing to do, um, some hybrid elements. And there are some loosened rules about, um, Commissioner presence at the meeting location. And so, um, I don't know, Jill, if that's gonna be discussed, um, at the meeting tomorrow or, um, or what. Um, I know you all have a, a noticed meeting tomorrow to go over kind of the, the new routine.
Yes, we will do that tomorrow. I, I will note that, uh, the Planning Commission's bylaws for, um, out of area participation are actually stricter than, um, what we're supposed to do through the Brown Act. So this is something that we might wanna talk about with the commission and, um, see if, uh, see council's interested in adjusting their bylaws or not about that. Um, it's, I think, council, uh, council and planning commission participation has been excellent during this whole phase. But again, we, um, we're wanting to, um, always do better than the floor and in-person meetings are definitely something we've been missing.
Great, thanks. Um, okay, so what are the consequences for Brown Act violation? Um, I think the most common, um, that I have seen is if there's a Brown Act violation for an item where the Planning Commission has taken action, then there can be, um, a lawsuit by a member of the public, um, to invalidate the action. Um, or to enjoin, meaning, uh, prevent future, um, city violations. And if that plaintiff is successful, then the city would have to pay attorney's fees. Um, there is also the possibility of, um, you know, these criminal sanctions, misdemeanor convictions of individuals for violating it, but that, um, uh, criminal kind of individual, uh, consequence requires an overt act and an intended violation. So, it's not something that you could do accidentally. Um, it, it's something that would have to be very intentional. Okay, um, uh, do, do we have any questions on the Brown Act before I move on to conflicts of interest? It might be good to field those before plowing ahead.
We do, I think Commissioner Gossett wanted to speak.
Thank you. If I spoke with another commissioner about a project or worked with a commissioner on a project, I understand that I can't speak to a third commissioner, but would I be allowed to speak to a city council person about that project? Or would I be violating the Brown Act? Especially if it's, you know, we don't know if it's a city project, a private project.
Well, that would be two different bodies. The, the one thing I would caution you on, that's not actually a Brown Act issue, it's more of a conflict of interest due process issue, is if this is a, especially if it's a private, um, project proponent, they have the right to know all the information that you're basing your decision on. And so, it's generally, um, you know, either you would, um, convey that at a public hearing and say, I had this conversation and, or I visited the site, or I picked up this information, um, about the project so that everything is out in the open, all the commissioners have the same information as you do and the applicant knows that that, those communications were had. Um, so I, I would see that more as like a caution about the due process rights of the applicant than, than a Brown Act, um, situation.
And even if the applicant happens to be the, they say, you know, state government, city government, county government, did, would that same rule apply? Do you think, Winter?
Yeah, I mean, the city is a little bit different. We've, you know, because we're all, you know, working as part of the city. So the city, uh, I don't think would really have the same due process rights or there wouldn't be the same risk of litigation there. But again, you know, in these gray areas, I think it's always better to err on the side of, of caution. And if you have any questions and wanna consult with me or with staff, um, you can always reach out. Um, you know, email me to set up a time to talk and I'm happy to work through, um, you know, what you wanna do and what the potential legal issues might be.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from my fellow commissioners?
All right, let's do conflicts of interest. Okay, so we're gonna touch on, um, two different sources of law about conflicts of interest. The first is the Political Reform Act, um, and the second is, um, just the common law. And, um, before, um, jumping into this four-step analysis, um, I did just wanna say that, um, for the Political Reform Act, there is a state agency that this, which is up here on the screen, the Fair Political Practices Commission, that provides advice to commissioners and other, um, uh, members of local governments, um, if you have a question, um, about whether you have a conflict of interest under the Political Reform Act. So, in addition to talking with me or with staff, um, you can also reach out to this, um, FPPC to get advice from them as well. Um, okay, so the Political Reform Act, um, uh, under this state statute, basically, um, public officials may not make or participate in making or in any way attempt to use their official position to influence a governmental decision um, in which, um, they know or have reason to know that they have a disqualifying conflict of interest. So, that's a mouthful, but basically it means if you have, uh, conflict of interest, you should not be participating in decision-making about, uh, project or action. Um, and one thing that's maybe counterintuitive about this is that, um, that it doesn't matter if your interest is one that could be harmed by the action or benefited by the action. The basic rule is that, um, you as a government decision-maker, um, need to be in a position where you're completely objective about the projects that are coming before you. Um, so, um, and this is true even if you, you know, would promise to put the public benefit ahead of your financial interest. It's really a pretty bright line rule. Um, and if there's, if there is a conflict of interest, then, um, you would not participate in decision-making about that particular project. Um, and there is, you, if you decide that you have to recuse yourself from a project, um, there is no shame in that. It just means you are a regular person with, you know, a home or an apartment or a business and, uh, or other financial interests, um, in the community. So, um, really, you know, if you have any questions, any concerns about this, again, um, I'm happy to talk with you. Um, so there's, uh, this four-step process to determine, um, whether you might have a conflict of interest under the Political Reform Act. Um, first, you know, you have to think about what, um, sort of assets and other, um, financial interests you have. And then whether a particular project or action could have a reasonably foreseeable financial effect on you. And I will just say, the thing that has come up most of all, um, over the last, you know, four years that I've been working with the commission is just, is there a project coming forward that's close to where you live? Um, so we, we have maps about that. We're gonna get to the special conflict donut on the next slide. But just to sort of make it a little bit more concrete, um, that's, that's what comes up most often. So, you know, let's say there's a, um, project that's, you know, kind of close to your house. Maybe it's a, you know, roadway improvement, bike lane, uh, new development. Could that have a reasonably foreseeable financial effect on you? Um, the second step is to think about, okay, yeah, it could have a financial effect, but is it gonna be material? Or is it just gonna be kind of, you know, what we would call de minimis? Um, and then, even if you get to material, the third step is, well, is that material impact really any different from the impact on the community generally? Um, and then the fourth step is, um, would you be using your official position to influence the decision? Um, but that four-step doesn't really come up that often. Once you get to step three, if you've decided you have sort of a particular interest, uh, that's material, that's usually when you would, uh, have to recuse. Okay, next slide. Okay, this is the donut, although the slide doesn't have it as a donut. I should redo that for the next time. Um, the rules used to be kind of different about this. Um, they were changed not that long ago. Um, but basically, if there is a, uh, and again, I'll just use your home as an example because it's the most common, um, issue that we run into. If there's a proposal that's coming before the Planning Commission for a project within five hundred feet of your home, there is a presumption that you have a conflict of interest. Um, and the only way to dispel that presumption is with, uh, a showing of clear and convincing evidence that, um, you actually don't. Um, the second realm of the donut is between five hundred and a thousand feet. Um, then there's no presumption one way or the other. It's just up to you to decide, go through that four-step process and decide whether there's a financial effect on you, whether it's material, whether it's different from the public in general. And then, if the project is beyond a thousand feet, there's actually a presumption that you don't have a conflict of interest. So, in olden times, it used to all be the green middle area and you just were sort of left to decide, go through that four-step process each time without any presumption one way or the other. So, I think, um, the donut does kind of make your jobs a little bit easier, um, because you kind of know, okay, the closer or farther away, you're, you know, if it's really close, probably safest to, you know, just declare a conflict. If it's really far, you can feel, um, pretty safe with the presumption that, um, there's no conflict. Um, so we have maps, um, that we use and that we'll share with you if there's a project that's close to your home. Um, so that we can help you go through this process of determining whether, uh, you might choose to recuse yourself. And the decision about how to comply with the Political Reform Act, uh, and whether to recuse or not is yours. Um, I can't make it for you. I can help you think through the consequences. Um, but the city will not tell you what to do. It is your personal obligation to comply with it. And that's why, um, you know, I, you know, we're totally happy to work with you and talk with you about these things and raise the issues. But, uh, at the end of the day, it is your choice. Um, and it's also a reason that it's helpful to have this FPPC um, to ask questions of, um, and, you know, better to, um, ask them early, cause they do take a little bit of time to get back to you. Okay, so in addition to the, um, to the Political Reform Act, there is also a body of law, common law on conflicts of interest. And the two basic rules are, um, under this common law conflicts that, um, you know, basically, you want to avoid an appearance of impropriety. Um, it's important to public confidence, um, in, uh, public agencies that, um, you know, that not only are we following all the rules, but there's, um, an, an appearance of propriety as well. Um, so if, again, you know, I'm talking about the, the floor, the bare minimum for compliance with these state laws, but, um, there is no limit on, um, your ability to be extra conscientious, um, in these areas. So if something doesn't feel right, it's not a true conflict, but you feel like you're, um, either your decision-making might be impacted by some connection you have to the project or you think it might look like, um, uh, and then impropriety. uh, and then impropriety. So maybe it's not your interest, but it's your child's interest or your parents' interest. That might be something to think about with respect to the common law of conflicts. And then due process is basically what I was referring to in answering Vice Chair Gossett's question earlier. That project applicants who are coming to the Planning Commission for a CDP or other permit are entitled to a fair process and fair consideration. And so, um, in addition to all these, you know, the other rules we've talked about, that basically means that all of you need to come into this with an open mind and be, um, and disclose the information that you're, you're basing your decisions on. So if at any point you feel like you can't keep an open mind, then that would be a clue that you may need to recuse yourself because you're not going to be providing an applicant with due process. And I think this one mostly comes up. I think probably most commissioners feel they can keep an open mind about things for these, um, for the projects that are coming. But, you know, for example, if there's an article in the newspaper and the reporter reaches out to you and asks you what you think about this particular project that's coming down the pike and you say, oh my gosh, I, I'd never in a million years would I approve that. That's a terrible project. That's, that's going to suggest you're not coming into it with an open mind. Or on the other hand, if you say, I love that project, I love that developer, I love that architect, I would approve anything that they ever put before us, that's also not really going in with an open mind now. Of course, none of you would ever say those things, but, um, but those are some examples of like indicators that, okay, um, there might be some due process concerns. Okay, and then, um, my last bonus topic here is Public Records Act, which I hinted at before. And this statute basically, um, provides a sort of a corollary to the Brown Act. So the Brown Act is about, the public having access to decision-making through open meetings. And the Public Records Act is about the public having access to public documents. And documents can include, um, you know, physical documents that, um, planning staff has on file, correspondence that we've received from the public, emails that you send to staff or you send to each other, emails, and it doesn't matter which email address you send it from. If it's about city business, that is a public document. So your Gmail, your Yahoo, your AOL, if, if you're really old school. That all, it doesn't matter which one you send it from, it's still a public document. And same with texting. And I will say, logistically, if, if there is a Public Records Act request for all records, including texts about a particular project, it can be pretty challenging to produce your texts. So it might be good practice to not do city business via text. You could just have that rule. It's not, I'm not forcing it. That's not what the Public Records Act says. I'm just, um, saying you might do that for yourself because it can be, um, challenging and kind of time-consuming and a little bit intrusive to actually have to produce those texts, um, if there's a Public Records Act request. And it's just a good reminder because people I think can get casual in emails and in texts about what they say. And basically anything that you put in writing about city business is public and it's something that you would have to feel comfortable seeing in a newspaper or, um, having any member of the public read. So there are some limited exceptions, um, to the Public Records Act. You know, if there, um, you know, police investigations, documents prepared for litigation. It's not typically stuff that, um, the Planning Commission deals in though. So, um, I would say most of your communications are going to be public records. Okay, I think that that is all I have.
Is there a topic on Planning Commission bylaws?
Yeah, I was going to plunge in. I just wanted, before I started, to see if there were questions on, well, Winter.
I actually had some, some questions I wanted to go back to and it kind of covers both. But I'd like to see if any of my fellow commissioners have any, um, anything they'd like to add. Trying to get the display here, not seeing anybody raise their hand. Okay, so we have some very passionate citizens in our community. And I'd like to just walk through a couple of use cases, just to kind of create some clarity here. So I have a citizen who is very passionate about their project, which, they frequently want to talk to me. They want to talk to everybody about their project. When that person approaches me and says, hey, I want to talk to you about this, like, and presumably they're talking to every Planning Commissioner or City Council member. What are the things we need to be mindful of when somebody approaches us about those types of projects?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, there, there is no prohibition on you talking to an applicant about their project. However, as you suggest, there are some things to be mindful of. One is, um, keeping that open mind, right? No commitments to one way or the other about how you are going to act, um, the application when it comes forward. The other is, um, uh, you know, I think it's prudent to do a disclosure. I mean, we did this, um, we were doing this for a little while, sort of ex parte communications. Like I was, you know, I had a conversation with this applicant, disclosed in public what the nature of the conversation was. And that's for due process, um, as well as this notion that all the commissioners should be acting from the same sort of basis of information about a project. And so, you know, it might be prudent to, if the applicant is coming up to you and wanting to talk to you, to say, hey, I can, I can listen to you, but I'm going to, um, disclose at the Planning Commission meeting that we had this conversation. And, um, I'm not going to, I can't, you know, really, um, respond to you about it. So, you know, just so that the, the person knows those are the ground rules going forward. I think the other thing which I think is not very, I, I don't think would be very usual, but like if this applicant said, well, I talked to Vice Chair Gossett and I talked to Commissioner Ruddock and they each said X, what do you think about it? You could end up with like a weird meeting that way because you'd basically be having this hub and spoke with, um, somebody in the middle, um, kind of, you know, mediating the conversation.
No, that's helpful. And then so I think in that scenario, probably best to come forward to say, hey, I can't talk to you. And I really wish you hadn't told me that because now we've got a mess. And so I would then, that, that's something where I think we'd have to bring that to certainly your attention, uh, as our legal representation. That's probably the right approach. Good. Similarly, with citizen advocates who either want to talk about a project they support or oppose, the same thing applies. We can't be engaged in activities where we're choreographing outcomes effectively. And then we need to be mindful of that. Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, what about, this is kind of a strange one. Some people are very opinionated before they become a planning commissioner. How do those types of opinions factor into your job as a planning commissioner? If you take in very public positions for or against something, is that something where you would need to recuse yourself? Or is it something where, well, that was before I was a planning commissioner? Like, what is the thinking around stuff like that?
Yeah, it doesn't really matter if it was before or after being a planning commissioner. It would be the individual's choice. We would probably want to talk through, like, you know, it would, seems to me like it would be a due process issue. Like if you came out, if somebody, you know, came out very strongly in opposition to, um, a project, I can see the applicant having due process concerns about that person, voting on the project if they had said, you know, never in a million years, over my dead body, sort of situation. I think typically communications are a little bit more nuanced than that. And, you know, there would have to just be, I think, some soul-searching and communication about whether, there really was an open mind, whether the prior communications had been to such a degree that it would raise due process concerns, um, for that commissioner to participate going forward.
Well, thank you. So lively discussion on the Brown Act. Anything else from my fellow commissioners on this topic before we move into Planning Commission bylaws? Commissioner, join us.
Yeah, I'd like some clarification, um, a- a- actually from the chair. What would constitute something that would, what, what in your opinion would have constituted something that was opposed or for a project? Would it have to be in public forum? What would that be?
I mean, I think that, uh, like the case of, the, the cases that sort of come to my mind and is where you have somebody who's very passionate about a project and they're talking to me about, hey, I've got this thing, I'd love to talk to you about it. And so, so my view on that is so a simple one of, if you want to talk to me about a project, I'm happy to listen. And, but I will disclose, so we had ex parte communications, 100%, right? And if I feel like some, so I think that's a specific example. I think sometimes, um, if somebody has come out, you know, and very vociferously said, hey, um, this specific project over my dead body is a good example, or language that's similarly vitriolic, that stuff that would be concerning. And we, I, I think we want to be cautious about, you know, hey, you know, everybody's got to make their own opinion on what's appropriate. But I think if something is questionable, you know, I think talking to city council or even talking to the FPPC is helpful. There's a really good example that we went through with, um, one of my commissioners, um, who, um, was on the Planning Commission. His wife was involved with the library and he did some volunteer work for the landscaping for the library. And so he was specific, very concerned about, well, can I vote on this, you know? Do I have a conflict of interest? I didn't receive any payment for this. But he went to the FPC, the FPPC and asked them to give an opinion on the matter before it came to the Planning Commission. And so that's an example of where if you're in doubt, then you should go do these things. And, and we've had several other examples like that in the past where somebody was uncertain. And I think the, the standard I would apply is if you've been involved in a project, either pro bono or, or doing some advocacy work and you feel like it's crossed the line, I would certainly, you know, reach out to the FPPC or reach out to city staff and get their guidance on it. That'd be my recommendation on it.
Thank you. So as far as opposing a project or, um, actually, you know, uh, uh, supporting a project, it was a question, you know, uh, I was asking because there's a lot of, um, social media that goes out there and people actually, you know, there have been some commissioners in the past that actually have commented on social media. And, you know, I don't know how that works in, in, in the concept of, you know, conflict of interest or keeping a fair and open and transparent, you know, mindset. You know, I, I, I tend to, uh, you know, question, you know, in my mind, if I see something on, you know, social media, you know, it, it, you know, as far as a person on the outside looking in, I can tell a person's tenor by saying, well, this person's either opposed or for a project. So if that person is a commissioner, then, you know, that would be something that we would have to take into consideration. For example, if I were to go into social media and say a whole, you know, a, a bunch of things about several different projects in the city, I would have to actually re, I would really think about where I stand on this project if I can have an open mind. And, and that's what you're trying to point out. Is that correct, Winter?
Yes.
Nice, Chair Gossett.
So to, um, your point Hazel, you know, I just recently attended some, uh, Planning Commissioner training and the, uh, land use attorneys that were training, uh, highly recommended that commissioners don't post on Nextdoor or Facebook, or not to even like a post because it could, you know, get us into, you know, a conflict situation or an ethical situation somewhere down in the future. So it's just, that's what they, you know, uh, recommended to, there were about 40 Planning Commissioners in the room. So they didn't say we couldn't do it. It's just, you know, in regards to projects and such, that's the advice the attorneys were giving the room, just to stay safe.
Commissioner Gorn? Hey there. Um, so I did have one question, um, which is, uh, everybody around here does a lot of volunteer work. I do a lot of volunteer work. There's no reason to refuse volunteer work because of a potential conflict of interest. Because like, you know, I don't know, being for, working for the swimming pool, raising money for the sighting of the new swimming pool. Is that something that, um, means that I would not be able to participate in that conversation? In which case, there's a, there's a lot of conversations I would not be able to participate in. I'm just curious about it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the way that this has come up is, we didn't get into, um, there, there are rules about, um, contracting and, um, entering city contracts and having people vote on those contracts who might have a financial interest. So I think this has come, I mean, it doesn't come up that much with the Planning Commission because you guys don't do contracts. Really, um, you make policy decisions and approve permits. But, you know, in the past, um, we, we, you know, have had commissioners who were really intensely, you know, involved in volunteering, uh, for organizations or being on the boards of organizations that, um, might be doing projects together with the city, you know, restoration projects, things like that. And I think that's where you might want to, you know, th- there might be some consideration. Like if the organization that you're volunteering for is coming forward to get a CDP to like, you know, I don't know, redo the pool or whatever it is. Um, and you're heavily involved in getting funding for that work. We might want to talk about it more on the, in the realm of the common law conflicts of interest than anything else. But otherwise, you know, volunteering usually doesn't raise these, these issues for the kind of work that you all are doing.
Thank you.
Okay. Joel, do you want to take us into the arcana of Planning Commission bylaws?
I am happy to do that. And thank you, Winter. That was, um, a lot to cover. And obviously it's, um, really case by case based. And we encourage you to reach out to staff or to, to Winter if, if you have questions about any item coming before you or things, things coming your way. Now, the bylaws, they're, they're really, um, meant to be a simpler guide for how to, uh, implement all the things that Winter just presented as well as the, the care and conduct of, of having a planning commission meeting and, and how you go about your business. These came into place in 2017. Prior to that, uh, the commission didn't have bylaws. I was really actually surprised when I got there. And so, um, I worked on these with Shu Mahal, the attorney. And we went through a few rounds of review with, with the commission that was seated at the time. And council adopted them. They haven't really been updated since. And it's okay to, um, open them a bit if you have some concerns about them. We, we really haven't revisited them. So you, I'm sure noticed that they're kind of soup to nuts, um, including, um, your duties and just how meetings are run, working with staff and all of that. And I'm not going to get into nitpickyness about all that. I have to field questions with other staff members and I'm more wanting to be clear about what, what we're really trying to accomplish by having the quorum and the really high quality meetings that this commission holds. You are making a safe space for everyone to participate. And it's, it's a really important duty of the commission and it's the pride of staff to work for you when, when this is accomplished. So making sure that everyone is heard and respected throughout the process. Um, this has been, I think even harder during our Zoom era, but um, it's, it's done well. And if you have feedback about how we're working with with community members during your meetings, please let us know because this is, this is something we take very seriously. Of course, also, you have a lot of staff that supports you and were available to you for discussing any particular item. Or if you have other, other topics that you just want to learn more about. And sometimes we come and give special presentations. I know, for example, Commissioner Gorn has asked for an update about stormwater management and that's something the city engineer is trying to, to bring to you at a point in the future. At the city attorney's office, public work city engineer and of course, your community development department staff are all available to you in particular. Just kind of thinking about how the commission is relating to other bodies with the city. Uh, you are often making policy calls with your permit approvals. And so you are a permit, you might be the last stop with a permit. But you could also be a recommending body to city council for things that are um, needing to go higher to them, such as zoning amendments or changes to the local coastal land use plan. The city council also has the final say on certain kinds of subdivision maps. Your recommendations are conveyed. Uh, there are folks that make recommendations to you. The A A C, the Architectural Advisory Committee, is a recommending body. They do not have permit approval authority, but we take their recommendations onto you as well as you, of course, get recommendations from your trustee staff. So we're um, trying to do that for you as well. Uh, sometimes you plug in with our Parks and Rec Commission and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. That was a lot more common when we were working on the master plan and the bicycle and pedestrian master plans. That's, that's kind of simmered down in the last year or so, but uh, they may be working on projects that are going to come to you for permits. So there's, there's some relationship there. And of course, anything that staff approves, you are the uh, appeal body for, for our decisions. So you have a lot of relationships with a lot of groups and you know, it's a big job and you sure get paid a lot for it, huh? We're, we're always humbled by, by working for our, our volunteer commission. Wanted to just spend a moment talking about the flow of your meetings because uh, that's been, it's outlined in your bylaws and it's something that former Chair Gorn made an adjustment to. And we were having in particular the uh, changing order between public, the public hearing and when the commission asks clarifying questions. I think our, our bylaws show clarifying questions coming right after the staff presentation. And Commissioner Gorn chose to, to flip that and that's okay to do. The bylaws give you the flexibility and the commission agreed to give it a go. And it seems like it's been working well for you and I, I believe that Chair Hernandez is just moving forward with that. So we've, we've adjusted our staff presentations to try to reinforce uh, that flow. And if you want to change it up again, that's okay too. Um, your clarifying questions, now, now that this has been done, we've noticed that the clarifying questions and the discussions sometimes overlap a bit and that's perfectly fine. Um, we might not uh, tease that out perfectly well in our minutes, but we try really hard to give you detailed minutes and always, always address them as needed. Uh, Commissioner Riddick asked us to talk a bit about motions and we'd encourage you to discuss some. Once a motion's been made and a second, that can call uh, the motion into question for discussion. You do not need to go straight to a vote. It's, it's a great opportunity to make a motion for the sake of exploring um, the premise that was put into that motion. Maybe it's a way for you to find, find a common ground with a different motion. Maybe the motion just, just you, you move on to another one. So you, you really don't have to go straight to the vote. And staff will try to hold off. I'm going right into a roll call if this is something that you want to work on. Uh, the commission, or excuse me, the city council um, frequently will discuss once a motion is put on the floor and have some additional discussion at that point. And I'm not sure, Commissioner Riddick, if there was more about this that you wanted to explore, but let us know.
Well, thank you, Director Ikas. Now, that, that was my feeling. I was, when I first joined the planning commission, I was a little surprised that we had a tradition of racing to vote as soon as a motion and a second were made. And I think it's because we traditionally are a body that achieves consensus through deliberation before a motion. But it's also important in, in the big majority of democratic parliament, parliamentary bodies to, to allow and even encourage debate of motions before a vote is taken on a motion. So I thi, I think it's important for us to, to keep that, uh, that freedom of, of freedom of, uh, action in mind as we go forward. But thank you for building it into your presentation.
No, we're, uh, thank you for bringing it to our attention. It's a good reminder. Um, so some things that we've been working on. One, one thing in particular you've noticed, and I didn't even get it on the slide, we, we have Spanish interpretation now for every meeting. And we're going to maintain that. And we, we don't always have Spanish speakers at your meetings, but I think it's really important to have it in the record. And we're still very good about doing it. We're, again, modeling your city council and this is, this is our practice. Um, we're also going to try to give you better, longer range of, of forecasting. It's going to take us some time to, to get to that. Um, and uh, former Chair Gorn had um, really encouraged me after some training that I think I think most chair gossip had, had received that. The biggest gripe of the commissioners at this training was um, you felt really jammed with the packets, the packet, the Friday packet, the Friday night packet. Um, we're going to try really hard to shift as much as we can to a full week in advance. And I think we'll be able to do that during this next phase where we're probably just going to have one meeting a month. It'll be your second um, uh, meeting of the month, so the fourth Tuesday. And, and then finally, just bylaws wise, you know, we're available to you. Keep working with us. We love it when you ask questions before the meetings. Um, it, it's an opportunity for us to do a better job with the information we're receiving and to have it available to the public and to all of you um, when you're, when you're going through your deliberations. And that's really, really all we have for, um, tonight on your bylaws, although one of the, if you, if you had a chance to skim them, they were, they were attached to this item. If there's anything about them that concerns you or you have questions, just let us know. And I think we, so for example, I think our bylaws restrict the off premises participation to only one individual. And uh, if that's a problem, let us know because I, I think the Brown Act lets you have, you can have up to two, provided you had a quorum present in person as we, as we shift to in person. Um, I don't think this is something to make a decision about tonight. Just, just uh, let Bridget and me know what you're thinking about that. We want to make it as, as flexible for you as we can. And
Well, I think, yeah, I think that's a really good point. Just historically, prior to COVID, I was uh, due to the nature of my job, often traveling. And so I, I've never invited anybody to come to a public meeting in my hotel room, but I have definitely ha, noticed public meetings in hotel lobbies and other public spaces prior to COVID. I believe some of the newer members of our commission may also have travel schedules. So it's likely that I will be traveling during some of the planning commission meetings. In fact, I am traveling now. Uh, so I, I'd like to, if it's appropriate, can we have a quick discussion on this item? Uh, Jill, or do we need to?
No, you can. Bylaws, yeah, bylaws are agendized. The entire bylaws are attached to your packet. I do want to, before I forget to mention this, um, in advance of you talking about it. Unlike the special rules that we're under right now, that this is the very last day, in fact, we're under these special rules. Um, if you are off premise, we really need to know in advance because we have to publish on the agenda of a location where the off premise participation is taking place. Um, so anything you can do to, um, give us a heads up on your travel schedule. Um, it helps Bridget and just have our, have our agendas um, accurately put forth. Sometimes you don't know until the last minute. That's okay. Just, just get it to us as soon as you can. But any advance notice on this is, is really, really helpful.
Yeah, and I've tried to do that in the past. I typically give two weeks' notice before I go on a trip. So does anybody have any comments or questions on that? I don't know, travel schedules are going to be an issue. I mean, sometimes people just choose not to participate in the planning commission meetings when they're traveling. That's also the precedent that other people have set as well. So okay, I'm not seeing any comment or feedback on that item. So I think we're good. Is there anything else, Jill, you or Winter, want to cover for this item?
For me, although I did want to let you know that all of the planning staff gave input and reviewed this presentation and they are all present tonight. Um, Scott and Bridget are in the room here, but I know that Okoye and Bader have also been um, watching this whole meeting and they're really interested in your questions and this training so that we can all support you with, with all these responsibilities that you have.
Well, thank you. And thank you for the presentation today. It was so far livelier than I would have expected. But we covered it well. So thank you. Okay. So I think we're going to close this item and the next item on our agenda.
Chair Hernandez, I don't know if you want to see if there's any public comment on this item.
Again,
You're just making me feel useful. It's really great. Thank you.
You're trying to get back in.
I appreciate, I appreciate you keeping me in line. It takes a village. So are there any other public comments, Bridget, on this item?
I'm not seeing anyone that's wanting to speak.
Okay, then with that in mind, I will close this item and we will move on to the director's report.
All right. Uh, thank you. This will be pretty quick. Um, so you do have a special meeting tomorrow. Bridget, is that at noon?
Yeah, twelve to one thirty.
Twelve to one thirty at the Ted Akkott Community Center. We hope you can attend. Um, if not, uh, please try to come early to our first in-person meeting uh, so that we can appoint you with the setup. And that first meeting will be March twenty eighth. And we have, I believe, a single family home will be on the agenda for five seven five Seymour. It's on the corner of Seymour and Highway one. Uh, also believe that we'll have Measure D before you. Um, we have to do it in uh, April, no later than April, but we're going to try to have it, um, ready for you in March for confirming the rankings for applications outside of downtown. Um, following that, your next meeting would be the second meeting and your, your typical, what would be a second meeting would be April twenty fifth. If we need, um, any of those second Tuesday of the month meetings, we'll try to let you know. Bridget sent you an email about this. Um, and as we're adjusting to this. I think a couple of you might have, um, put in for some training, the League of California Cities Training. I hope so. That's great. And we'll let you know as other training opportunities come forward. Uh, for city council, they are completing a series of three listening sessions. This is something they do to prepare for budgeting. Uh, the most recent was conducted in Spanish. It was at the library on Sunday. I attended. It was very well attended. And, um, really, really thoughtful input. Uh, the final listening session will be uh, this coming Thursday. It's in person at six P M. in the Ted Akkott Community Center. And everyone is welcome. Um, March seventh, the city council's uh, regular meeting, we will be bringing the housing element report that you saw tonight will be conveying to council that evening. And then on March eighth, city council will be holding their priority session, excuse me, their priority setting session. It's a long day. It will be at the Akkott Community Center from nine A M. to three P M. I think they have a break for lunch. And we're really looking forward to doing that. Uh, the Architectural Advisory Committee has been meeting in Zoom, so now they are also going to shift to in-person meetings. They meet in the South Day Room and they'll be back in that room. That's a really good room for them. It has a great layout table. And I think their next meeting is March twenty third. Um, I do have an update tonight about the Coastal Commission. Uh, the Coastal Commission's March meeting is local. It will be at the Oceano Hotel next week. Uh, they'll be meeting on Wednesday and Thursday, uh, March eighth and nine. And we have an item on their agenda, uh, the short-term rental and home occupation ordinance. Uh, they, they heard that back in October and continued the item to allow staff to produce additional data and analysis. Uh, we have completed that process. And the Coastal Commission staff recommendation is posted on their website. Uh, staff has been reviewing that and we will be issuing a letter by the deadline, which is, um, five P M. this Friday. And I plan to attend the Coastal Commission meeting to the city. So, um, anyone who's interested in this ordinance, as it has progressed many, for many sessions through this commission and then through council, uh, we encourage you to at least take a look at the uh, Coastal Commission's website and it is on their Wednesday, March eighth um, portion of the agenda. And then finally, um, just want to give a special acknowledgement to Bridget Jett for three years of very smooth sailing on the these Zoom meetings, not just for for three years of very smooth sailing on the few Zoom meetings, not just for the planning commission, which she, I think, did every single one of them. But also for the Architectural Advisory Committee, for the Community Development Director, as well as for pitch hitting for city council from time to time, as she did last night for a special meeting of, of city council. So Bridget, thank you. It's been so much work.
Thank, thank you, guys. Thanks for everyone for making, working together. I think we all had to just sort of learn on the fly and just day by day, we learned. And yeah, I've learned a lot. So I'm excited to see everyone in person though as well. So it'll, it's bittersweet.
Yeah, yeah, three dimensional.
I enjoyed it. I enjoy helping out. And yeah, thank you.
Good. Thank you. And that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to chime in real quick about the planning commission meetings. In the future, going forward, we are going to be having them at the Ted Adcock, so I know we're doing the training tomorrow, but we are joining forces with the council and using the same equipment and everything and having them at the Ted Adcock Center, not the EOC anymore. So you may want to layer, if you haven't been to a council meeting. It can get kind of chilly in there and since the back doors are open, so just be prepared. Because you know, it's been cold lately and wet and rainy. So just prepare for the, be, be layered, I guess, is my only advice. And then everything else will be there for you. And we'll go over it tomorrow. So thanks.
Very good. Are there any planning commissioner updates? Commissioner Riddick?
I'd just like to thank Bridget for her hard work in wrestling Zoom to the ground over the last three years. And very many times, I've, I've given thanks that that was her job and not mine over the last three years.
Well, thank you.
So well done. And I'd also like to thank the, the whole city hall team for the, the work on the annual housing element update. And some of us have a little bit of insight into how labor intensive the tracking and reporting is on that. And please take comfort in knowing that it's a, a great cause that, that we all support you and working so hard on. So thank you for that, as always.
Thank you.
Do any of my other commissioners have any communications I'd like to share? I would like to echo Steve's, Commissioner Riddick's comments. Thank you all for having gotten us through COVID. We've got the city's business. We kept the city's business running fairly smoothly. So thank you all for that. It's been a trying time for sure. Okay, well, that said, can I get a motion to close tonight's meeting?
Do you?
All right.
Move will adjourn.
Excellent. Can I get a second?
I will second that.
And can I get my last roll call vote to close a Zoom planning and commission meeting?
Commissioner Riddick?
Aye.
Commissioner Johannes?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorn?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gossett?
Yes.
And commission, I mean, sorry, Chair Hernandez?
Bye.
Meeting adjourned, and we'll see you tomorrow. And if we don't see you tomorrow, we'll see you on the twenty eighth in person. Bye, everybody.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you.